I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 11th, 2016 legislative session. I would ask that anyone who has a cellphone or a pager, please turn it off or put it on silent, and if you have to take a call, please exit the room. In case of an emergency during the meeting, you may exit this room, make a left-hand turn and a right and go down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, you can make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case of an emergency. And if you need special assistance, please let us know. At this point in time, I'd like to invite Reverend John Wright of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship at Salisbury to give us the invocation.
I'd like to invite you to enter with me into a spirit of prayer. Spirit of life and love, Mother, Father God, Yahweh, Allah, Source of all, as members of this great city, we affirm that our citizens use many languages of faith, yet there is but one ultimate reality toward which all those words point. And whatever words we use, however we conceive of that deep mystery, our purpose here is the same, to work for the common good. Tonight, we celebrate the opportunity to gather together in this chamber as representatives of the diverse people to whom we are joined, joined as the rivers and streams are joined to the ocean, joined as the eagle is joined with the sky, joined with the past, the present, and the future, as we live together here in Salisbury. Thank you for this opportunity to honor you as the eternal spirit of service. I ask for blessings on these men and women who have given their time and energies for the common good. I ask that you bestow the gift of patience, that they may diligently weigh conflicting views and find the right therein. I ask for tolerance, that they may truly hear and consider opinions unlike their own. I ask for wisdom, that they may recognize the face of truth when it appears before them. When they feel fearful at the great responsibility of being stewards of this city, help them to remember that they are not alone. When they feel overwhelmed or in despair, allow them to take a breath, to step back, and to remember their purpose. And when they feel hope, when they see possibility, call on them too, to take a breath, to step forward, and still to remember their purpose, which is to work for the common good, to make our community and our world a better place. These things I ask in the name of justice, of peace, of love, and of all the names we use to call on you, that supreme power that guides us, whatever our traditions, to act in ways that are loving, wise, and just. Amen. Shalom. And blessed be.
Thank you Reverend Wright. Please stand now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a presentation by a community organization, Pin Wheels for Protection. I would like to ask Courtney Geyser to please go to the podium with your guests, if you have any, and introduce them.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Courtney Geyser, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about our Pin Wheels for Protection campaign. It started under the Life Crisis Center, and it's designed to spread awareness and break the silence that surrounds child abuse in our community and beyond. Before I get into explaining Pin Wheels and what we have planned for April, which is Child Abuse Awareness Month, I'd like to give you a little bit of a background of why I'm here. In 2013, my husband Roy Geyser was appointed as President of the Life Crisis Center Board. He was honored to be helping such a worthy organization, and would come home after board meetings educating on what they do to help our tri-county area. He had gotten to know many other good, well-respected people in the community through his involvement there. We talked about how lucky and fortunate we were to have such a good home surrounded by loving family and friends, safe from the types of abuse and abusers that affected those there that he had seen and heard of at the shelter. One day, I found myself reading a victim impact statement on behalf of two little girls that really changed my life and led me to the place I am today. Here's an excerpt of the victim impact statement. It started out as what should have been a typical Saturday morning for the family. As we headed down to the road to the sports center where both our daughters would be playing soccer, my husband was giving his usual pep talk as both father and coach to the girls as they were half-listening, half-tuning him out, like any normal six- and eight-year-old girl may do, as distracted by coloring pages of their latest fashion creations. Focusing intently on her work of art, my six-year-old says, "Crayons make everything more beautiful." My husband, laughing at her randomness despite her ignoring his latest soccer strategies, turns around from the front seat, smiles at her, and says, "You're right, buddy, they do." And for a brief moment, I found myself lost in time, staring at her sweet face and at the beauty and innocence captured by her comment. But then, just as quickly as the moment came, it was lost again, just as many of the moments such as these have been lately. My eight-year-old says, "I feel sick. I can't breathe. What if I get sick at the soccer field, Daddy? My stomach hurts. Mommy, I really don't feel good. I don't know if I can play." Her little sister snapped out of her crayola utopia, engaged in concern yet not surprised at her big sister's mounting anxieties. She begins confronting her older sister, as well as reassuring herself, as she has been conditioned to do over the last several months. She tells her that it's going to be okay, and that Mommy and Daddy, Grandma, and her other grandparents were going to be there watching her and cheering her on. As I tell her to practice her deep breathing, I assure her that she'll be okay and try focusing on having fun. This scenario is just one glimpse into a day, life as we have known it since November 5th of 2013. On that day, our lives were changed forever. My husband, myself, my mom, we all remember as the day that the nightmare began. Little did we know, as my oldest started talking on a typical Tuesday morning before school, that she had been living painfully much longer in a nightmare of sexual abuse inflicted upon her at the hands of a grandfather figure who she referred to as Poppy for at least three years of her life. So you might ask, why did this particular story change things? I mean, I knew all about, I thought I did, child abuse and life crisis, and had seen and heard about the effects of abuse on children and their families. But the difference this time was that victim impact statement was mine. That was a story that I stood up and read in a courtroom on April 1st of 2014. My husband and I are the parents, that we thought we were educated about child abuse, the ones that we thought we were immune to such trauma. We were a good family. We were involved. We thought we knew everything, stranger danger, things that you teach your kids. But we learned the hard way that child abuse does not discriminate. It can happen anywhere, and it happens unfortunately, a lot, at an alarming rate, right here under our noses. Despite Roy's position in life crisis, ironically, and what we thought we knew, we had way more to learn. And I'm so thankful that through being on the flip side of things with life crisis, the CAC, we actually have learned a lot, and we've learned what we can do from now on. Our family is one case, one in over 500 cases reported in just the last year. As hard as it is to get up in front of you all today, it is nothing compared to knowing what my girls have endured at the hands of their abuser. I can't change the way my journey here has began, but I do have the power to change how it ends, for my girls and for all the other children out there. And come hell or high water, with Pin Wheels, Life Crisis, and hopefully you all, that's what I am determined to do. Before turning it over to Abby Marsh, who will explain more about Life Crisis Center and Pin Wheels for Protection, and what great events we have coming up this month, I would like to leave you with a quote by Albert Einstein. He says, "The world cannot be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything." So please help me in doing something, starting today. Please help me break the silence with Pin Wheels, Life Crisis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Abby Marsh, and I'm the Director of Legal Services at the Life Crisis Center. I would like to thank you all for having Courtney here tonight, and myself. And the first thing I'd like to do is thank Courtney, and thank Courtney for her bravery in taking what has been a tragic situation for her family and turning it into an impassioned plea for the community in breaking the silence. She spearheaded the campaign, which is a national, it's actually a national campaign. The Pin Wheel is the nationally recognized symbol for breaking the silence and child abuse awareness, because it represents the innocence of our children, and the bright futures of our children, and what they deserve, as opposed to what's happening frequently. And as Courtney pointed out, child abuse, unfortunately, child sexual abuse in particular, does not discriminate. There's nothing about it that says that it can't happen to your family. And the response frequently is to protect the unit, and we've seen that. Anybody here who has watched Spotlight, which was the Oscar-winning film this year, knows that in an effort to protect the unit, in that case, the Catholic Church, you protect the abuser. Ultimately, you're protecting the abuser by maintaining silence. So the Pin Wheels for Protection campaign here locally is intended to bring awareness to people about child abuse, and also assist in education, and raise funds for the Life Crisis Center to provide children's therapy to those children who have suffered abuse. This month, we have a number of events. We actually had a pinwheel planting on April 3rd, and that planting, we planted approximately 500 pinwheels over by the Moose Lodge on Snow Hill Road. And each one of those pinwheels is representative of a child in our community that has suffered child sexual abuse. As you drive by and you see the shining pinwheels, again, we're reminded of our children and the reason we want to protect them. As I came here tonight, I noticed that the Health Department has lined outside their building with pinwheels. And it's just, quite frankly, I'd love to see Delmarva blanketed with pinwheels, with everyone giving a show of support, even if it's only one pinwheel on your mailbox, to show that we'll no longer accept abusers in our community. Just to give you the rundown of events, we already have had, again, the pinwheel planting, and we had a great Zumba Glow sponsored by Olympia Fitness. That was on Friday night, and people came out with glow paint and had a great time at Olympia Fitness, again, raising money for children's therapies. We also have coming up tomorrow night at the Brick Room from 5:00 to 10:00, a guest bartender evening, where there'll be numerous guest bartenders, including Courtney and myself. And again, it's to raise money for the Life Crisis Center so that we can provide children's therapy to the children who've suffered abuse. There's also, we'll be out on the 3rd Friday, and on Wednesday, April 20th, at Adams, there'll be a sip and paint. Actually, Courtney is going to be our artist, and we'll be painting glasses, either a wineglass or a mug, with a pinwheel pattern. And then on Saturday, April 30th, is really the culminating event for the month. As we end Child Abuse Awareness Month, we're going to have a 5K at the Moose Lodge. It will start and end at the Moose Lodge. People who are interested can register online at active.com, or I actually did bring, I only have one, but we can make copies, of our race application, and I certainly hope that we'll see some members of the council out there on April 30th. I know that we might have some guest appearances in our dunk booth, because there will be a post-race party, and as I understand it, Mayor Day will be in the dunk booth, as well as our state's attorney, Matt Maserello. You can register that day at 8:00 AM for same-day registration, although I highly encourage people to register in advance. But we will be harvesting the pinwheels on that day also. And so Coach Woods from Salisbury University is going to provide us with a number of football players, and I believe we'll also have some SU soccer players, who will give a pinwheel to each runner as they come in, and will harvest the pinwheels. Clearly, these are all fun events, exciting events, for people to take part in. But as I already said, the real importance of this is breaking the silence. And it's starting the conversation and learning how to have a conversation with your child, and look for signs about when abuse might be occurring. And the key is protecting our children and not the abuser. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, thank you very much for that. Can you, again, just for people who are watching at home, repeat the websites where the information is available, so we make sure that everybody gets the information?
Yes, absolutely. First of all, you can visit the Life Crisis website, www.lifecrisiscenter.org. And at that location, there is a Pin Wheels page. You can see the calendar of events. You can also get more information about the Pin Wheels campaign in its entirety, and you can register online for, there, you can hit an active button to register for the race. You can also go to active.com, www activate.com, and search LCC, Pin Wheels for Protection 5K, and you can register that way as well.
Thank you very much.
We're going to nominate Chris Demone to run on behalf of the city.
As council representative.
Twice.
Well, teams and families are encouraged, so start building your team.
He is the team.
Wait one second, right here. That's all right.
Trying to walk away.
That's all right. Well, thank you, and the work you're doing is incredible, Courtney, and Abby, and Michelle. You know, I found out just a few minutes ago, by the way, that I'll be in that dunk booth, so I think I remember something in the charter about not throwing baseballs at each other, so.
Not throwing at you.
You're not getting a throw.
You shook on it. You have to do it.
So I did, I did. I shook on it. So, you know, you've got incredible kids, and they're very well-spoken, and polite, and kind, and, you know, you've got to be very proud. I'm sure you are. You know, what I want to say right now is, we've got a proclamation, and I think this is just a small token of our recognition of the great work that you're doing in our community, and the great work that you've done for several years now, and the great work that your organization's doing as well, to bring awareness to child abuse and to try to bring an end to child abuse.
Forty years.
Forty years. Forty years, Michelle. So with that, whereas April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and Pin Wheels for Protection is a campaign coordinated by Courtney Geyser to raise awareness of and bring an end to child abuse and neglect, and whereas the blue pinwheel is a nationally recognized symbol for child abuse prevention, representing the innocence and bright futures of our children, and whereas there are 500 blue pinwheels in a garden display on Beagle and Park Drive near Snow Hill Road, representing the more than 500 child abuse cases reported this past year in Wycomico County, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among families, social service organizations, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business communities, and whereas we recognize that we must all work together as a united community to increase awareness of child abuse and find ways to prevent it, because prevention remains our children's best defense, now therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim April 11th, 2016, as Pin Wheels for Protection Day in our city, and congratulate Courtney Geyser on another successful blue pinwheel campaign in garden, which acknowledges April as Child Abuse Awareness Month by serving as a positive reminder that together, we can keep our children safe by preventing child abuse and neglect in our city and surrounding communities.
And you have a Facebook page as well, right? And your girl's petition is on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. My daughter's, she asked about the petition. Jake, do you want to, he had a meeting with my daughter Laney and my daughter Brylee right before this.
Yeah, may I? So, these incredible kids have created a petition, and this is just a portion of the petition, but you can see there's already about 45 signatures. And this is a petition to get people to sign to agree to participate in stopping child abuse. And this is created by kids. Pretty powerful. And one of the things that they have asked through this petition is that we commit to going and participating in this day of awareness on April 30th at the Moose Lodge, by participating in a 5K walk for some of us, and a 5K really fast run for others. Mr. Demone. And, you know, I think it's, do you mind if I share your email address? I don't know if you did that before. Okay. And you can email, if you want additional information, if you want to participate. Courtney's email is csgeiser, G-E-I-S-E-R, at hotmail.com. And again, this is just pretty incredible that kids have signed up online, or adults have signed up.
Well, we've been trying to get through some online recruits.
You've used social media, you've used social media to recruit.
This was a school, a class project for my daughter, and she came home and said, "Guess what I did, Mommy?" And as soon as I saw it, it just was a fictitious petition, and I said, "We're taking it to the real mayor." And she said, it was like meeting the president.
She was speechless.
They'd be very disappointed if, once they actually met the president after having met me, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Oh, can we get a picture real quick? With the proclamation. You want to do it with the council back here? Yeah, can you, you want to come around? We're rolling in.
Rolling in.
Rolling in.
Let's get tight.
Rowdy H.
Or gets number 20th.
Like Rowdy H.
Number Rowdy H.
Roll and roll.
She's got some air, isn't she?
Yes. Yeah, now.
Everybody out there, start going, fanning.
There you go.
No, fall more, it's more.
There's more.
Oh, sorry. I mean.
All right, here we go again. One, two, three, and four.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you very much.
I've got two.
Maybe buy some bellywose.
Chief, do you want to call the utility truck and have it bring some fans? Just saying. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you have another proclamation.
I do, I do. Before I read this proclamation, I'm going to invite Andrea Bursler, the Director of the Library, to come up. And I'm going to make a few remarks, and then I'm going to let you talk, and then I'm going to.
Should I be worried?
No. And then I'm going to read this proclamation. But what I wanted to say was that, you know, I had an opportunity just to meet with Andrea a little earlier today, and there's some incredible things happening at the library. And if you think that the library, the Wycomico Public Libraries, are a repository for books and nothing more, you have not visited the library in a while. You have a severe misunderstanding of what a library can be. This is a community center, an entrepreneurship space, a space for getting employment in the community, a space for getting assistance on your homework, something I could have used years ago. You know, a shame you weren't here. But really incredible things happening, and more very good things getting ready to happen at the library. So Andrea, why don't you, if you don't mind, just give a quick introduction into National Library Week, and maybe some of the things that the library has planned, but then I'd like to give you this.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about the library, which is one of my favorite subjects. And Jake's right, we've got some really great things happening, and some other great things that are on the horizon for the library. I want to thank those of you who came to our literacy breakfast. I think a lot of you at that point saw some of the great things we've been doing. The Homework Help Center has about 10 to 12 students every week that come in and get free one-on-one assistance with their homework. We've seen some real transformational work with these students, including one remarkable student who went from getting incompletes and Ds and all sorts of things to getting almost all As on his report card. And this is all free to the residents of the area. We have a Job Search Center, which has been going for 10 years strong, thanks to Lower Shore Workforce Alliance and their grant. We appreciate that very much. We are sort of the one-stop job center for the downtown, and we have anywhere from 40 to 50 people a week who come in, get assistance with their resume, help with online applications. And if you want a real eye-opener for how we disenfranchise people online, try filling out an application for Walmart. It is hard. It is really, sorry about that, Mayor. I really am.
Just saying.
It's a national thing, I get that, but it is, it is not.
Everyone's telling you the same.
It is not easy, and it takes hours sometimes to fill them out. We also have, of course, all the standard, you know, borrow a book, borrow a movie, we've got the Entrepreneur Center as well. Our newest initiative is to try and restart our adult literacy program, which we had to close down several years ago due to a loss of funding. This would allow adults who do not read at a fifth-grade reading level to come in, get free one-on-one tutoring, in the same model as our Job Search and our Homework Help, and get them into, hopefully, Warwick Community College's remedial program, and get a high school diploma. If we can get them to the high school diploma stage, we reduce their unemployment rate by 2%. If we can get them enrolled in Warwick, we reduce it another percent. So we can take them from 8.5% down to 5.5% by this one act. So that's our next initiative, and we'll be talking more about that over the summer. And of course, speaking of the summer, we have summer reading, and we invite both children and adults to join us for this year's summer reading, which is all about team events and sports, and being outside and wellness. And we've lots of contesting games going on, just like we did last year. So I thank the city for its continued support of the library, and for its continued interest in making sure that we are a vital organization in the life of this community.
Well, Andrea, with that, I'm going to read this proclamation regarding National Library Week, but I just want to reiterate how grateful we are for all that you do as the anchor store for downtown Salisbury. Whereas Wycomico Public Libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people, and whereas Wycomico Public Libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, library staff and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas Wycomico Public Libraries are evolving in order to serve our community by continuing to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, whereas Wycomico Public Libraries and library staff open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEM programming, maker spaces, job seeker resources, early literacy programming, educational support activities, and the power of reading, and whereas Wycomico Public Libraries and library staff understand that libraries transform communities like ours, so they are looking beyond their traditional roles in order to provide more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services which connect closely with community needs, and whereas Wycomico Public Libraries support democracy and affects social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of who they are or where they live, and whereas Wycomico Public Libraries, librarians, library staff.[1760.57] their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of who they are or where they live. And whereas Wycomico Public Libraries, librarians, library staff, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore, I Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim April tenth through sixteenth, 2016, as National Library Week, 2016, in our city, and encourage all residents to visit Wycomico Public Libraries, especially the downtown branch, this week to explore what's new at your library and to incur, and to engage with your librarian. You belong at Wycomico Public Libraries. Andrea, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
Uh, you have an event coming up, or have we already missed it, for the Fines?
Oh, no, we, we did, uh, the Food Drive for Fines in December. Um, we were, we were working closely with Joseph House, and they said that actually beginning of December was the time that they needed donations the most. Our next big event is actually the Friends Book Sale, which will be, um, April twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, I believe that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Um, and if you are a member of the Friends, there's a special preview sale Thursday night for Friends members only. Um, so those of you who joined at the breakfast, good for you. Um, and, uh, if you're a Friends member, everything's half price, so that's even nicer. And, uh, then, and we will be hosting the Wycomico Public Live, uh, the Wycomico Public Schools Art Show the following week. So we've got a lot going on. But no, we moved Food for Fines to December because that seemed to be the better time for the food banks and for.
I just knew I'd seen an email about an upcoming event. I mixed up which one it was, but.
But we, we used to do it this month, yeah.
And if we're not Friends and we want to be?
If you're not Friends and you want to be, you can stop by the libraries, any branch. Uh, we have the downtown branch, of course, which is of great interest to the city. Um, our mall branch, which I think is also actually in the city limits, and, uh, the, the town of Pittsfield, there's a branch. Uh, the, the memberships start at fifteen dollars, and at fifteen dollars, you get half-price off of everything at, at both book sales for the year. So it doesn't take long before you recoup your, your fifteen dollars. All the proceeds that the Friends raise go back into the library for projects that are outside of our budgetary constraints at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Resolution 2620 from the consent agenda and move it to directly after the consent agenda.
Second. All right, we have a motion to, uh, remove Resolution 2620 from the consent agenda and do it immediately after the consent agenda. Uh, do I have a mo-, uh, we now vote on the amendment?
Oh, you've got a second.
We have to, uh, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Now, uh, with the revised, uh, we're now voting on revised legis-, uh, legislative agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now make a motion to, uh, I'll, I'll accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Nichols, good evening.
Good evening. Um, on the consent agenda this evening, we have the March seventh and March fourteenth closed session minutes. We have Resolution Number 2618 to rename the Mayor's Council in support of people with disabilities to the Disability Advisory Committee. Resolution Number 2619 to rename the Revolving Loan Bankers Review Committee to the Revolving Loan Advisory Committee. Resolution Number 2621 authorizing the mayor to enter into an MOU with certain parties to apply for the Department of Justice FY16 Adult Drug Court Grant Program. And Resolution Number 2622 declaring that quality lending services eligible to receive enterprise loan benefits for their property located at 1751 Westwood Drive in Salisbury, Maryland. And that would conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve, uh, Ordinance Number 2380 for the second reading.
I was getting ready to motion to accept this.
Yeah, the, the one that we knew.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we have to, we have to do the one, yes.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to accept Resolution Number 2620.
Second.
Everybody had a turn.
Very good. Way to play. Very, very good, way to play nice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so, uh, with this resolution, it was originally in the consent packet, the lowest bidder pulled out, um, for unknown reasons, so, uh, we're going with the second lowest bidder, which is still came under, uh, where Public Works wanted it to be. So Resolution Number 2620, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting an endowment fund grant from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the Salisbury Park Bandstand. Whereas the Council of the City of Salisbury has the responsibility for maintenance of the bandstand in the city park, and whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore administers a Salisbury Park Bandstand and Bridge Designated Endowment Fund. And whereas the Salisbury Department of Public Works obtained vendor quotes to perform routine maintenance on the bandstand, and whereas the routine maintenance includes painting and replacing broken windows. And whereas the total cost of maintenance work is nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, and whereas the endowment fund has adequate income available for grants to be used for the bandstand maintenance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, does hereby accept the endowment fund grant for the, from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the Salisbury Park Bandstand valued at nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. I will now, uh, call motion on Resolution Number 2620. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for Ordinance Number 2380 for the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman, good evening.
Good evening. This is, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for a community outreach addiction team and youth substance use prevention initiative. Whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the reduction of substance use, and whereas the city believes that the, that investing in a community outreach and addiction team will benefit the city, and whereas the city has estimated thirty-five thousand is needed for such a program, and whereas the city has estimated that five thousand is needed to fund a youth substance use prevention initiative, and whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not include an appropriation suitable to fund the forty thousand required for the aforementioned, now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's FY 2016 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase current year surplus oh one zero 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 dash four six nine eight one zero by forty thousand, and increase the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions, comments?
This is probably going to be one of the most important things we do this year, like you said in the last meeting, and, uh, I, I think the message also needs to go out. You know, if you know somebody who's struggling with addiction, uh, you know, don't wait, you know, seek help. There, there's plenty of, of resources out there. And, uh, you know, another, another part on prevention, I encourage anyone who has children alive, whether it's grandchildren, nieces, nephews, your own children, have these conversations about the importance of making good life choices, and when, when you have a problem, to seek help. So I think it's important that the, the message has to start when they're young, and, and we're doing everything we can to help those who are struggling now. And to those who are peddling poison in our community, no, we have no tolerance, and I have no sympathy for what happens to you when you get caught. So that's my opinion.
And I would always also like to say this to parents, please pay attention to your change your children's behaviors, because that is one sure sign that something is really going on in your child's life. Um, and pay more attention to who they're hanging with, because that also shows a sure sign. I'm very glad that we've got this ordinance underway, and, um, I'm like Mira, in a sense, it doesn't matter whether you're my family or whose family. If you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law. And we want to save our children, along with adults, so this is our first step in doing just that, and I really appreciate City Council and, um, the mayor going along with this and doing what is right for our city, getting our city on a road to recovery.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, I think it's really important. We're, we're doing a lot in the intervention area, and that's what part of this money is for. Another part of it is for the prevention part, to reach people, kids, before they ever start. It's much easier to, to prevent it than to stop it, much easier. So, uh, five thousand of this is going for a speaker that we're bringing to our community to talk to our high school students and to have a community meeting to talk about how easy that is, how it starts with the beer in the basement and you, ends up on the street homeless and addicted. And it's, it's really a very, very slippery slope and a really easy one to step into. Um, so it's really important that we do that. The city is contributing five thousand dollars to this effort, but we're also actively seeking other participants to help. Um, it was cost prohibitive to bus all the students to one location, as we had originally intended, so the speaker is going to go to each of the four high schools and then ha- also have a community meeting, but we are seeking additional funding to do that. So, uh, anyone that's interested can, can get in touch with us, uh, with me if, if you'd like. The United Way's going to handle that funding for us, be the recipient for that. So I, I encourage everybody that can help at however much you are able to do. Uh, we need to bring this, this speaker here, we need to bring people that can connect with the kids, it's a young guy that's, that's traveled that path, and, um, keep them on the right road. And also we'll give a touch point for, uh, the state's attorney and the sheriff and Chief Duncan and others to have a touch point with those kids before they start the school, because we want them back in the classroom and not in court and not in the corner in September.
And I would also like to say to parents, don't be ashamed to know that your child is using drugs or abusing drugs or whatever, because in the long run, you will be sorry in the end, and, and I, I'm, I'm a witness to it. You'll be sorry.
There are support groups. Reach out to, to me and to, to April, and we'll get you in touch.
Anything else? I think, uh, I, I concur with my fellow councilman, and I think this is the least we can do to address this terrible, terrible plague that's hit our nation. That being said, um, I'll call the motion for Ordinance Number 2380. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion for Ordinance Number 2381 for the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, this is Ordinance Number 2381, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2015 Water and Sewer Capital Projects Budget to reallocate ton- funding from the Fitzwater Street Lift Station and Paleo Well Number Three Project. Whereas Ordinance Number 2287 identified the funding sources for the capital project appropriations in the city's FY 2015 budget. And whereas the funding source for a portion of the Paleo Well Number Three was identified as existing bonds, and whereas Paleo Well Number Three Project is not a named project in the bond pool, and Fitzwater Lift Station Project is a named project in the bond pool, and whereas at the advice of Bond Council, the Finance Director and the Public Works Director recommended reallocating the funding sources such that Paleo Well Number Three Project does not need to be added to the bond pool. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2015 Water and Sewer Capital Projects Budget be here, be and is hereby amended as follows. Decrease North Division Street sewer construction by one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. Account nine six one one two dash five one three oh two six dash five five oh one two. Number two, decrease North Division sewer engineering by forty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Account nine six one one two dash five one three oh two zero dash five five oh one two. Number three, increase Fitz, Fitzwater PS construction by one million six hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Account nine six one one two dash five one three oh two six dash five five oh one one. Number four, increase Fitzwater PS engineering by three hundred and ten thousand. Account nine six one one two dash five one three oh two zero dash five five oh one one. And number five, decrease Fitzwater PS construction by one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. Account nine seven zero one zero dash five one three oh two six dash five five oh one one. And number six, increase Paleo Well Number Three construction by one million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Account nine seven zero one zero dash five one three oh two six dash four nine oh four zero.
Question? That was really good. I was impressed. I'm surprised you didn't pass out, but it was really.
Comments or questions?
I've heard that.
Can you repeat that?
All right, if not, I'll, I'll call the, uh, motion for Ordinance Number 2381 for second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2383 for the first reading.
Second.
Mr. Irtun seconded it again.
Uh, this is Ordinance Number 2383, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury granting a utility easement to Delmarva Power and Light Company across city-owned property on Brown Street in Salisbury, Maryland. Whereas the city owns the new Salisbury Fire Station Number Two located on Brown Street, and whereas the city is constructing a new fire station, and whereas the construction project includes bot- burying electrical facilities on city-owned site, and whereas Delmarva Power has requested that the city enter into a utility easement agreement, copy of which is attached to the ordinance, that allows Delmarva Power the right to construct, operate, and maintain the infrastructure in association with the new Salisbury Fire Station Number Two property, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the City of Salisbury allow Delmarva Power and Light Company to construct, operate, and maintain infrastructure within the new Salisbury Fire Station Number Two property, and that the mayor is authorized to execute the utility easement agreement. And then there is a diagram which I think was looked at in the work session showing where that would be.
Now I'll call the, uh, motion to approve Ordinance Number 2383 for the first reading. All those in approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2384 for the first reading.
Second.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for services required in development of lots one and eleven. Whereas the city has determined that there is a need to increase development in the downtown area of Salisbury, and whereas the city should continue to encourage and work with developers to create additional quality mixed-use structures incorporating housing, excuse me, housing, retail, and parking garage. And whereas the city entered into a disposition contract to sell lots one and eleven to Deverco LLC with development rights for the lots, and whereas Deverco LLC has requested a financial contribution from the city for an additional urban planning study and redesign for lots one and eleven to best utilize that area for public infrastructure. And whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the planning required for the development of lots one and eleven, and whereas the fifty thousand is required as a contribution to services for planning of the design and public infrastructure required in the development of lots one and eleven. And whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not include an appropriation for the fifty thousand needed, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2016 City of Salisbury allowed Delmarva Power and Light Company to construct, operate, and maintain infrastructure within the new Salisbury Fire Station Number Two property, and that the mayor is authorized to execute the utility easement agreement. And then there is a diagram, which I think was looked at in the work session, showing where that would be.
Questions? Now I'll call the motion to approve ordinance number 2383 for the first reading. All those in approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2384 for the first reading.
So move. Second.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for services required in development of lots one and eleven. Whereas the city has determined that there is a need to increase development in the downtown area of Salisbury, and whereas the city should continue to encourage and work with developers to create additional quality mixed-use structures incorporating housing, excuse me, housing, retail, and parking garage. And whereas the city entered into a disposition contract to sell lots one and eleven to Deverco LLC with development rights for the lots. And whereas Deverco LLC has requested a financial contribution from the city for an additional urban planning study and redesign for lots one and eleven to best utilize that area for public infrastructure. And whereas the city desires to facilitate and support the planning required for the development of lots one and eleven, and whereas the fifty thousand is required as a contribution to services for planning of the design and public infrastructure required in the development of lots one and eleven. And whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not include an appropriation for the fifty thousand needed, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: with an increase in the current surplus available, account oh one zero 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 dash four six nine eight one zero, by fifty thousand, and an increase in planning and zoning by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'll entertain, I'll call the motion for ordinance number 2384 for the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Nichols, we have any public comments?
No, yes.
Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. If not. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.